Call this meeting order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all council members are present. We had an amended agenda that was presented this evening. We have two additional items to the agenda. Action item L, accept resignation of our police chaplain, as well as resignation on our ambulance department, and all in the same action there. And then also 8B Beltline Road update. I know Vicki had sent out to bring your books back, so hopefully everybody was able to do that from the original presentation. Any other additions to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the changes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Warren and seconded by Dave. Any discussion? I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. At this time, we have our minutes from our October 15th and our October 29th meeting. Is there any additions or corrections to the October 15th minutes as presented? How about the October 29th special meeting minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion by Dave and seconded by Mike to approve the minutes as presented for October 15th and the 29th.
Any discussion? Call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Moving on, public open forum. Is there anybody here who wishes to address the council? Anybody here wish to address the council? Seeing none, we will just continue on with our agenda. We have no public hearings and we have one report this evening, the EDA report. Vicki?
Okay. The EDA met today, it was their regular meeting, and they had a few items on their agenda. There's some action items for you later in the evening, and that is for the payment, approval of the TIF payments, abatement payments, and also a recommendation for early decertification of two TIF districts. And then we see some unfinished business on the Unger property and the racetrack property, which you will have action on tonight. And then one new business item that they did talk about was the access driveway into the interpretive center and how that's going to be structured with the reconstruction of Beltline Road. So there's no action on that tonight, but your action items are the TIF and abatement payments.
Any questions in regards to the EDA report? All right, thank you Vicki. Guess we'll go right into our action items then. Action item 7A, request for proposals for 2014 fuel and wash bids.
As you know, each year we go out for proposals for fuel and wash bids, and last year, the city council suggested that going forward, we would do it in two-year increments. So we do have it in front of you for a two-year proposal, which is to solicit proposals for local companies to provide us our fuel and wash, and generally, they would do a discount per price per gallon for both gas and diesel. The potential bidders that we have are Holiday Truck Stop, North Star, Gas Mart, Casey's and Frederick's. The current provider for 2014 is Holiday for both diesel and gasoline. So what we're looking is to authorize for the solicitation of fuel and wash bids for 2015 and 2016.
Any questions? When do you expect those back?
We usually get them back and we'll award them in December, so the first of the year they're good to go.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion to authorize the solicitation of fuel and vehicle wash bids for the 2015-16 season as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keith, seconded by Dave. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Action 7B, request for proposals for the 2015 refuse hauling, I believe, is it not?
Well, we have, well, this as well, we have submitted for a two-year contract, and that would be for the refuse haulers, which is for the city buildings, and for all the different dumpsters and recycling bins that we have for the city buildings and the parks. We did put it out here for a two-year because we also discussed that last year, that perhaps we should give that option out. You can certainly do it for one year if you like, but I do have it here as recommending to authorize the solicitation of refuse hauler bids for 2015 and 16.
And I believe we did say to do that, I'm just looking at our amended agenda, it states 14 on here, so that's why.
That could be.
Any questions? Again, as we had asked Vicki last year to look at these as two-year bids, I guess that's what we're proposing to do. Is there a motion to authorize the solicitation of refuse hauler bids for the 2015-16 years?
So moved.
Motion by Warren, seconded by Mike. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. All right, moving on to C, Christmas by Candlelight promotion. Vicki?
This is the chamber's request, and for the last 15 years, the downtown merchants in the chamber, they've held the promotion where they have the luminaries on the sidewalks and they stay open late for Christmas shopping. There's no merchandise to be out on the street, they're just asking the permission to use the sidewalks for the luminaries. So they're requesting the date of Friday, December 5th, 2014, from dusk until 9:00 PM. So that's the request, is to the council to approve the Christmas by Candlelight.
And as Vicki stated, we've been doing this for many years, it's a great event, and we have a very good turnout, so I highly encourage we continue. Is the council willing to approve the Christmas by Candlelight and placement of luminaries on sidewalks in front of businesses on Friday, December 5th, 2014?
So moved.
Motion by Mike, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dave. Is there any discussion? I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. All right, action item D, set meeting to canvas votes from general election.
You know, following each election, we all know what the election results are, but they're not official until the city council meets and passes a resolution certifying them as such. Minnesota statute dictates that we have to hold the meeting between November 7th and November 14th in order to do that, and the county will be mailing us the absentee totals tapes prior to that time. So any day of the week of the 10th, except Tuesday, we'll work for that meeting, so I'm recommending November 12th at noon, if that works.
November 12th, work for at least the majority?
Yeah.
No? For you, Keith?
One second.
That's an airport board meeting at 1:00 that day, as well.
I'd be back for that.
Okay.
11:50, I've got my, yeah, I'll make it.
And if not, as long as we have a majority, and we have four, you know, we can canvass.
Yeah, I'll make it.
We can't change the results, we just got to approve them. All right, with that.
Still scared of the write-ins.
General consent is, if you don't mind, we'll set the date for November 12th at 12:00 here at City Hall. Everybody agree?
Yep.
All right. Okay, moving on to E, approve resolution 2014-83, accepting bids for sale of excess vehicles.
A couple months ago, actually, the city council approved that the police department advertised these excess vehicles for sale. They've gone through the min-bid auction process, and we have sold six of them, they're listed there for you with the total amounts that we received for them. So we're asking to approve resolution 2014-83, accepting the bids for the excess vehicles and equipment. And they range all the way from $105 for the 95 Ford Escort up to $4,925 for the 2000 Ford Excursion. So we had a pretty big range this time.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the resolution 2014-83, accepting the bids for the excess vehicles and equipment as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Warren.
Second.
Seconded by Keith. Any discussion? I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Okay, moving on to F, approve resolution 2014-84, approving the gambling premise permit for the Sock Center Youth Hockey Association.
The Youth Hockey Association has obtained permission from the Moonshine Shop to be a site or a premise for their pull tabs, and so they need permission by the city, and we would approve that premise as a gambling site. This permit is just from November 15th to the end of the year, and then they automatically renew for one-year periods on the first of the year. So what this request is for, adoption of resolution 2014-84, approving the gambling premise permit for the Sock Center Youth Hockey at the Moonshine Shop.
Any questions of staff? Hearing none, is there a motion then to adopt the resolution 2014-84, approving the gambling premise permit for the Sock Center Youth Hockey Association at the Moonshine Shop as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keith and seconded by Mike. Any discussion? I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. K, action G, approve the 2014 TIF pay-as-you-go payments.
This comes as a recommendation from the EDA, but you have in front of you, there's four pay-as-you-go developer payments from tax increment financing and two loan repayments from tax increment financing that are due in December. Note that four of them are the final payments, so we'll only have the two that are left in the TIF district, and that'd be TIF District 1-4, which is Mississippi Flats Housing, and or it's a redevelopment district actually, and then 1-11, which is the Wind Turban. The total of these payments for the December is $55,798.52. I also put in the spreadsheet for you, and kind of see how they all lay out, but that's just for your information. So what we're looking for is to approve the 2014 pay-as-you-go payments in the amount of $55,798.52.
Any questions of staff? This was brought up at the EDA meeting today, and the EDA's recommendation was to move forward with paying the payments as presented, so. With that, is there a motion to approve the 2014 pay-as-you-go payments in the amount of $55,798.52?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Warren and seconded by Dave. Any discussion? I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Moving on to H, approve abatement payments.
The city also has two abatement payment contracts, one is with Fairway Pines and one is with Dunham Express. This payment for Fairway Pines is their final payment, which takes them up to the maximum amount of reimbursement, so their check is $7,053.35. And Dunham Express receives semi-annual payments, and it's $25,4828. And what these payments are, is it just reimburses them for the city share of their property taxes, unlike TIF, which captures the other governmental agencies. So this is just the city share that they get reimbursed for a period of years until they meet their commitment. So we are looking to approve the semi-annual abatement payments to Fairway Pines and Dunham Express.
Any questions of staff? Is there a motion then to approve the semi-annual abatement payment to Fairway Pines in the amount of $7,053.35, and to Dunham Express in the amount of $2,548.28?
So moved.
Motion by Dave, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Warren. Is there any discussion? I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries, five in favor, none against.
You guys are really talkative tonight.
Yeah, we're moving very fast. All right, well, we're on item I, approve purchase of property. Vicki?
The first property purchase that we have in front of you tonight for approval is known as the Unger Property Purchase, and this is a result of the closed meeting that the city council had, and then other negotiations. What the recommendation is tonight is for the city to take formal action on the purchase with some conditions, and these are being put into the purchase agreement format. The attorneys for the Unger Trust and our attorney are arm-wrestling a little bit, just to get the language, just till we're each comfortable with it. So the purchase price of the property is $920,000. It is contingent upon successful annexation into the city limits and successful TIF plan amendment and clear title. So those are, the source of funding for this purchase is TIF District 1-1. This is residual pooled funds that are utilized for this purchase, and the district will be decertified on December 31st, 2014. So the TIF plan amendment and the annexation and those things have to occur prior to that date, and we are on track to get that done. So the question, the action tonight is to authorize the purchase of property and execution of the documents contingent upon successful annexation, TIF plan amendment, and clear title.
Any questions of staff? I think, as Vicki noted, and it should be well noted again, is that these are residual pooled funds from existing TIF District 1-1, so there will be no outside additional dollars needed that's outside of the current TIF district to make this purchase. So for those, these types of investments, we're able to do this with dollars that have already been pooled and is available for us to make acquisition right away. Any questions outside of the description as presented? Is there then a motion to authorize the purchase of property and execution of documents contingent upon successful annexation, TIF plan amendment, and clear title?
So moved.
Motion by Mike, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Warren. Is there any discussion?
Just one, it was about 60 acres, right? 59 something or other?
It's 59.3 or something like that.
Yep. Any other questions? If there are no questions, I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Moving on to J, approve purchase of property number two. Vicki?
This is also after the city council's closed meeting on October 15th. We reached out to the Felling family representatives regarding the offer the city council was comfortable with making, and then we did have another closed meeting, or that was the closed meeting that we had with them. This purchase recommendation is for approximately the east half of the racetrack property. The racetrack property is about 39.4 acres, so it's approximately 20 acres and 20 acres. The purchase price that was offered was $500,000 plus $60,000 contribution toward demolition costs. There is a contingent upon successful annexation of the racetrack, the entire racetrack into the city limits, upon TIF plan amendment, upon, contingent upon clear title, and there would be a reserve for 66-foot easement for the road and utility that would go straight off the end of 410th or Essler Street. And they have final acceptance or denial was expected to occur before the meeting, and I did meet with Merle Felling, and they do want to move forward with the purchase. So that is what is in front of you tonight, is to take formal action, authorizing the purchase of the property and the execution of the documents contingent upon the annexation, the amendment, the clear title, we would include the easement in there, et cetera. So and then there was also one other thing that we talked about was how the grading would occur, and, you know, the final finished grade of the property would be, you know, fairly level actually, from 1222 to 1228 feet. And they are here if you have questions, so.
Only to clarify your et cetera. Are you referring to the grading when you say et cetera at the end of the conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Any other clarification? Again, these are residual pooled funds from TIF District 1.1 that we're looking at making this acquisition. We will then have approximately 80 acres for economic growth, and I think it's outstanding that the city will finally be able to be at the table as we move forward and businesses approach the city looking for parcels. We've all been up here a lot of years, and I can't count how many times we've had people come to the city to look at land, and we've not been able to meet their needs, not just for their current needs, but their growth. And that's usually the issue we get into with just small, little, one-acre lots, even if we were to combine them. Right now, in our industrial park, which is owned by the Opportunities, we have approximately 10 acres up there, but it is one-acre parcel, so it's, this gives us great opportunities for more economic growth. Certainly, the parcels are both south of the freeway, which is where the growth has been for quite some time, and we look forward to seeing not only the Fellings in this particular acquisition being able to grow and expand, but the opportunity that presents itself with the 20 acres east of there as well. Hearing that, is there any additional questions, comments? If not, is there a motion to authorize the purchase of property and execution of documents contingent upon successful annexation, TIF plan amendment, and clear title as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Warren, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to clarify that it also includes the easement.
And it will also include easement, that is correct. Anything else? Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Thank you.
And the timeline now going forward is November 12th, which is next Wednesday night. I'll be attending the township board meeting, that's where we'll be talking about a potentially orderly annexation for both this property and the Unger property. November 19th, which is two weeks from tonight, the city council will be hearing, will be having the public hearing on the TIF plan amendment. We did receive from both the county and the school districts the necessary waivers that we need to move forward with that. So we are on track for both of those things to occur. You'll see, actually, coming out in the paper tomorrow will be the advertisement for the plan, or for the TIF amendment plan and the map, and those kinds of things will be in the Herald tomorrow, following those two things. And we're then set pretty well to be able to move forward to closing, as long as we have all the documents and everybody is happy how that goes, so. This could happen quite rapidly, you know, but we do want to allow some time for snags that happen along the way.
Very good, thank you. And so these two parcels have been, will be included in our new TIF District 1.1, so it'll be incumbent of the parcels that we're looking at acquiring tonight. Thank you Vicki. Moving on to K, approve timeline for the public work supervisor.
We did prepare at the direction of the city council, the timeline for filling the position of public work supervisor. I did attach the timeline, the position came back graded at a 14. It came back at 499 points, which is right at the very top of 14. 14 is 459 to 502. So it's just right at that tipping point, so, you know, as we move forward and the position evolves, there is a chance it would be upgraded if other things were added, but in the meantime, it can start at that, and then we'll move from there. The timeline I have on there is November 5th for the city council to approve it, and tomorrow then we would get it out to the paper and everything and accept applications. We actually like to do it through the 25th instead of the 26th. The 26th is the day before Thanksgiving, that would give us time to put packets together to give out to the committee for doing the TNE ratings over their Thanksgiving break, so they can get them back to me early the next week. And then we'll be able to select who we want to have for interviews and have time to get those lined up the following week. So we would like to be able to be conducting interviews the week of December 8th through the 12th, and potentially a conditional job offer and council action on December 17th. That's pretty aggressive, we could make it happen, it just depends on, you know, people's time commitments for interviews, et cetera, so. I guess that's the timeline that we have put forward that we think we can do, and we're asking for the city council to authorize us to put it in force.
Just a couple things to add to that, as the council is fully aware, we approved the job description already a couple meetings back, and so this is the follow-through on getting this position hired and filled. We, in our last hiring, which will be starting our new clerk payroll specialist.
Monday.
Monday, she will be starting, so we have gone through this process just recently, and we think the timeline is very aggressive, especially the November 25th through the December 1, one week really there to get our ducks in a row for the rating and then moving forward with the interviews. We have been, Vicki and I talked today about how it went the last time we did interviews, and I think it went real well. We had the personnel committee, and then we also had one person at large, as well as, in that particular meeting, it was the police chief and a person from another community. I had mentioned to Vicki that possibly we would do it in the same format if the council agreed, and we would bring in another person, or potentially two at-large to sit in on the interviews, as we did similar to with the payroll specialist that was hired. One of the thoughts might be to have somebody from the Public Utilities Commission potentially sit in, or another at-large body. Hearing that, does anybody have any questions? Is there a motion then to approve the timeline and placement on wage scale as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Warren, seconded by Dave. Is there any discussion? Call the motion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Okay, moving on to the new item that was added to our agenda this evening is accept a resignation. And we have a resignation this evening. Vicki, do you want me to review these, or do you have?
You should, because I gave you my copy.
We have a resignation from Pastor Ron Hemsworth, who is our chaplain, police chaplain, and he is also an EMT, so I do have a letter here from the police department and from, excuse me, from Ron to the council. Says, "Since being appointed on July 1st, 2003 by the city council, Sock Center has been my privilege to serve as chaplain with the Sock Center Police Department for the past 11 years. I've had the opportunity to ride weekly with the officers and observe their professionalism, care for people, and sworn duty to uphold the law. Sock Center is a better community because of the job that our law enforcement surrounding agencies perform on daily basis. The citizens of our town should be proud. Because of the fact that I'm moving away from Sock Center, I'm submitting my resignation as police chaplain. My last day as chaplain will be November 21st. I wish to thank the city council, the three men that have served as police chief while I have been chaplain, and the officers of the Sock Center Police Department for allowing me this opportunity. It has been an honor to assist members of our community while they were experiencing tragic circumstances. It has also been an honor to encourage and counsel the men and women of law enforcement. May God continue to help you to perform your mission to the best of your abilities. Sincerely, Ron Hemsworth." And we also have a recommendation from Kathy Stuford, our ambulance director, and she is asking to accept the resignation from the EMT from Pastor Ron Hemsworth. And his last day, he is scheduled through the ambulance, is November 15th, so that will be his last day. I do have a letter here from Kathy, and basically it states, "From Ron, we sold our house and are closing in December, will pull out of town on that same day. In order to give adequate time for packing, I need to be done with the ambulance by mid-November. I'm on the schedule through November 15th, so that will be unfortunately my last day. I have thoroughly enjoyed the ambulance service and the great spirit of teamwork that is evidenced by who we are and what we do. I'll be proud to be able to say I worked for the Sock Center Ambulance Service. You have been a great director for us, and I wish you all the best." Pastor Ron. So, we have two letters from Ron, been very involved in our community, both on our police department as our police chaplain and on our ambulance department as an EMT, so he'll be very, very well missed from our community. With that, is there a motion to accept the resignations from our ambulance department and from our police department from Pastor Ron?
So moved.
Motion by Dave and seconded by Warren, is there any discussion?
Is this something that we will be going out to fill his position as far as chaplain, or?
We haven't had that discussion yet. We just, we've just received this resignation today, actually, here in the office.
Yeah, and due to the timing and of our meeting and his needing to be leaving, we had to add it to tonight's agenda last minute, so Vicki and we'll maybe need to talk to Brian about the next steps. I'm sure on the EMT side, they will
I'm sure on the EMT side, they will be looking for a replacement just to meet that.
Sure. Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against, and I wish Ron all the best. We'll move into our unfinished business then. Amendment to city code, CVB Board. Vicki?
At the January 15th meeting, earliest this year, the city council, we waived the requirement that the Chamber of Commerce representative on the CB Board not be a paid employee. Right now it restricts that. It says it should be a representative of the chamber and not a paid employee. We waived that requirement, which allowed Andrea Kerfeld to serve on the board for this year. And then we were going to revisit it late in the year. Well, late in the year has come. And at the last council meeting, you directed me just to bring it back to the full council rather than going to committee. So I have it in front of you tonight for an amendment to the city code to remove that restriction from the code. So basically what it would say, one who shall be a representative of the Chamber of Commerce. And it doesn't say any longer and not a paid employee. So this would allow a paid employee or any member of the chamber, I don't know how many members they actually have now, that would be eligible to serve that position. So I do have ordinance 750 in front of you amending the city code defining membership on the CV Board. Be board with that one change, removing the restriction.
Any questions? Hearing none, I believe that's what we asked Vicki to do, was to come back and to strike that language from the codes. So with that, is there a motion to approve the ordinance 750 amending city code defining the membership of the CVB Board?
So moved.
Motion by Mike, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dave. Any discussion? I'll call the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. All right, moving on to our second addition to our agenda, which is the Beltline Road update. Vicki and Keith.
I had asked you to bring your books because Keith may have you referring to some of the maps, et cetera, in there. But we had talked about what the potential funding sources could be for this. And the reason it's here tonight is the county is going into design phase. They want to know if this storm system needs to be designed into the system that they're doing. If you notice, there's flags and stuff down there today. If you came by there, Excel Energy is going to be doing soil borings next week to move those big power poles out of our way in anticipation of the turn lane. So this was the one where last year you had agreed to give them an easement for some guy wires into the interpretive center for one year. But what they're looking to do is to put the poles that don't need guy wires in. So we won't need that easement anymore. And they're out there doing soil borings to make sure that these poles are supported by the soil types. So they are moving forward with that. So what we're looking for tonight is some direction from the city council. Are we going to be participating? Is, are we going to be doing a part of it? Are we going to be doing all of it? And then the other part of it is how do we want to fund it? You know, we do have several avenues that we can get the funding for that. The issue is, you know, how much are you comfortable annually committing to it? You know, there's, then we would structure some kind of a financing around that. There's some options of internal funding. There's some options of the last project fund that was closed out where there's dollars left, an old debt service fund actually, that was for a road project that could possibly be added to this. There's a potential of if part of it is specially assessed, which was not the way it was proposed to do. But if on a project like this, if 20% is assessed, then you can do with a special assessment bond. We could do a stormwater utility revenue bond for a part of it, but that could only be funded by stormwater utilities. We do have a small part of the stormwater utility dollars that would be available to this. There's option of a street reconstruction bonds. I mean, so there's a lot of different things and these different funding sources are more dictate whether you can levy or back it up with GO. So it's just how we structure that. So once we decide if we want to go forward, how much annually we're comfortable with committing, then we would structure borrowing, potentially borrowing or internally funding around that. So as far as the money side of it, you know, we can do the project if you're comfortable doing it, but we would need to know, you know, what you're comfortable. If you're thinking, no, I don't want to levy anything for it, you have to figure out a different way to do it. We'll work around that. But, and then Keith has some questions. I know some of you had some questions about if we can phase it in some phases and any other questions you might have come up with since we had that. So if you have any questions for me on the funding side, or if you want to talk to Keith first on the construction side, it doesn't make any difference, I guess.
Vicki, in regards to, you and I had a chance this afternoon to kind of look at all the options. And we talked about the remaining debt service dollars that are available. I think there's about $330,000.
Correct.
That could be utilized for this project that's currently sitting in a fund that's not been allocated. In regards to the assessing and being able to create a bond, do it through a bond and assess, we have to assess 20% and on stormwater and the particular project in whole, there's not, it's not designed to be assessed as we typically would.
Correct.
Because it's stormwater, it's not infrastructure, it's not, you know, it's just not, but stormwater. I don't want to say but stormwater, but it's, because it's a big thing. But it's not an assessable thing that we have based on our assessment policy that we've assessed in the past. So the option of assessing the project is, and/or being able to bond it on a special assessment bond is not really an option because we don't assess it. Okay? So the funding needs to come either internally or some other type of bond or funding mechanism. So just wanted to share that up because it took me a while to get my hands around. Well, we've done all these projects over the last five to 10 years and we've always been able to bond for them. There's been some, but as we looked at them all, they were all infrastructure and road reconstruction and, you know, trunk mains and whatnot all. So anyhow, I wanted to just note that. Vicki, did you have anything else to add in regards to the funding side?
No, it was just the only thing was like when you touched on it right there, people have the assumption that we can go out and just get money whenever we need it. But the statute's very strict on how we use money, when we're allowed to bond for money and when we're allowed to commit tax dollars to pay for that bond. That's where the issue really is. So, but in talking with our consultant, actually, he was today here in the office, that he said we can structure, when he got a good understanding of the project, he goes, "We can structure around that, especially if the city is willing to commit some old capital project dollars to it and debt service dollars that we have." So I have a higher comfort level with that now than I did earlier. But I think now the city council just needs to decide, are we going to do it and to what level we're going to do it? And then we'll structure the funding for it. So.
Thank you. Keith, I maybe have a couple of questions for you. I know the proposal that you had presented is a great proposal. You had given us about six, seven options and then you kind of narrowed it down to alternatives one and two just based on the total project cost.
Cost and benefit from a hydraulic standpoint. Yep.
And one of the, one of the challenges that I personally am having with this is the, the holding pond along Fairlane Drive. I think there was three or four different proposals that allowed us to move that holding pond potentially to the Walmart properties out in, I wouldn't say it's not on Walmart property, but the property to the.
Couple spots down there.
Couple spots out there. So, but before I would, I want to get into that. I was wondering, and I visited with Vicki today about it, if this could be a project as we've done in the past where we phased projects over a couple of years potentially. And my thought was, is your dollars that you put on this, together on this project, as I looked at it for, you called it the West End and East End.
Uh huh.
Your West End took the construction, and correct me if I'm wrong, east across Main Street to where the 36-inch pipe stops.
Correct.
And goes into existing 36-inch.
It's kind of basically the east side of the Holiday Station there.
Yeah. Okay. So, and I know it's extremely expensive to bore underneath Main Street, but that was all taken into consideration in your west half cost.
That is correct.
Your west side cost total also included two holding ponds.
Two smaller ones, that's correct.
Two smaller ones. One in the corner of Beltline and Getty Street, or 12th Street and Getty Street. And then also up along the west side of Beltline.
On the south side there, yeah.
On the south side, just past Bromance.
Yes.
If we were to look at the size and were able to try to manage the water in the holding pond, that's the closest to Getty Street, would we have an issue if we did not continue on with the second half for maybe a year or two years in order for us to get, one, to get the funding and to be able to work with Stearns County, because this is a project in conjunction with them?
Sure.
What impact would we have if we did not go past that year one?
This is a great question. I can't tell you the exact specifics, but I can tell you that we won't receive a large benefit from a flooding perspective without doing the east portion of the project. We provide a benefit that we can get the infrastructure in the ground, which is good as it relates to the county project and those kinds of things. That saves us money in the long term. But we won't really realize any substantial flood mitigation measures until that second phase, the east phase, is done. It certainly can be done, but, you know, everyone has to realize that we're putting a bunch of money in the ground and we, we're not going to get a big bang for the buck until we do that easterly phase of it. So, you know, I would say it's, the public would need to know that. We need to make sure that everyone realized that, yes, this is a two-phase project. So we, you know, this, don't expect to see on the, you know, the next year, say we don't do the east side in the next year, don't expect to see a significant improvement in the flood if there are large rain events. It'll be better than what it is now, but it won't be significantly better than what it is now. I would put it that way.
So then let me clarify. If we are purchasing property for ponding on the west side and we are taking and we're installing a 36-inch pipe along 12th Street all the way to the other side of Holiday and all of our flooding to, I should say, a lot of our flooding today is right along 12th Street in that corner of Getty.
Yep.
By installing the holding ponds, by increasing the flow to the other side of Main Street, will not impact the flooding that we've been seeing?
Not significantly because the hydraulically, we need to lower the hydraulic gray line, the height of the water in that Fairlane and that area that's kind of going north and south, if you will. So until we do that easterly part, we essentially can't get the water into that pipe to get it out of there. It just sort of backs up essentially what's happening now. We still can't get the water through that system, you know, and move to the east. Will there be some improvements? Yes, there will be some. I can't quantify specifically what they'll be, but there would be some improvements with doing just the westerly portion. But it won't solve it until we do the easterly portion.
So you're saying is we just can't get the flow based on what's.
Right. We just can't. There's a, thing of it is there's a big bottleneck on the east side and we have to open that up in order to allow the west side to work.
The ideal part would be if we could do the east side, but with the county doing their job next year, we don't have that option.
Correct. I mean, obviously we have some issues with pipe size and things on that west side. I mean, but, but if we just did the east side alone, if we could, if you will, timing wise, that would probably actually have a larger impact on what would happen on the west side than the other way around. Unfortunately, we're in a, we're in a timing issue with the county. They are going to move forward with this project is my understanding, what I've been told. So, you know, they're waiting for us. We've told them that we're discussing this tonight. They're waiting for this, but they're, they're looking to move forward with or without us in the very near future.
And one of the issues is if they do go ahead and do the project, the project without us, and then we decide to do that west side, we're going to end up tearing up Beltline Road at our own expense.
Right. That, that west side cost will be more.
Right.
There's no question.
And Keith, you had, you had some discussions, I think, with the county in regards to their share, their,
Yep.
what they believe is their cost participation. And if I recall right, it was somewhere around 2%.
Yeah. And take that with a little bit of a grain of salt. It's very rough at this point. It needs to go through several hoops, if you will, to get to that final number. I kind of suspect it'll be a little more than that, but I wouldn't expect a large, large portion of that cost. But I kind of suspect it'll be more than 2% when all said and done.
Okay. Because if you look at 2% over the total projected cost of the project, even if it's $700,000, that's $14,000. Very minimal.
Correct. But remember, theirs is really only paying for within the right of way. So we have a lot of acreage, but a lot of it isn't theirs.
And that's, mine drives to my next question. If we phase this in our project is a two or even a three-year project, their percent and the size and the scope of the phase one, if you want to call that, which is the up to almost a Timberlane.
Yep.
The percentage, 2% is much greater than because the size of the overall project is almost a third than what it is originally proposed.
Correct. And I, and I really think even if we did the whole thing, I think once we're, we actually get into the details of it, I do think we would be looking at most likely the westerly side anyway. So I do think that number's going to go up. Exactly the number, I can't tell you at this point, but I think that 2% is a little too low at this stage. But you, but you're right. If we phased it and said, "We're just going to essentially 71 and we're just dealing with the west side," that may make that percentage go up a little bit higher. But I wouldn't get the hopes up to thinking that's going to be a huge amount of the project. Just keep that in mind.
Understood. And then the last question that I had, we had, you had, you had did a drawing, one of your plans, and it's not what's in this packet, but it actually essentially was to put new infrastructure, kind of it was around down Timberlane, almost through the parking lot of Walmart and then around the eastern side.
Uh huh.
Vicki and I were looking today and we thought, well, what if we turned and went south across 12th Street right there by where the new pipe stops, or let's say phase one stops? And we went around the backside of McDonald's. And we would possibly have some things we'd have to work out along American Inn because it's very close to the right of way there. But we stayed along that backside of all those properties, didn't tear up any roads. We still stayed on private property, so to speak.
Uh huh.
Did you ever do a cost analysis with that in mind? Or did you simply look at only trying to utilize existing infrastructure? Because that would be new infrastructure.
That would be new. And the other stuff was new infrastructure as well. You'd save some money from, you wouldn't have to go into Timberlane essentially and tear those portions up. We looked at it, but it's really tight through there. It could be done. Overall, would it save us much money because we're going to have restricted trench type of construction through there? It's, you know, we have to get by. I can't get, we can't put it on mendat's right of way. We have to be on an easement that we require through, from the private property. It can be done. I would say that's more of a detail, design detail that we could get into. Will it be substantially more cheaper to get us closer to option one? No. It's not going to save us a lot of money by going that route, but it definitely is a potential.
But it would eliminate having to have any additional ponding out along Fairlane and/or out along.
Yeah, right. We'd essentially move to, right, to phase, to the second option, which doesn't have, we do have one where we have the pond kind of in the, I guess I'll call it the southeast corner of Walmart, if you will, through there. Uh huh.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That helped clarify some things for me. Does any other council members have any questions, comments, thoughts?
I know, looking at the options, I definitely don't, do not like the idea of having that holding pond down by, on Fairway, on Fairlane Drive, you know, next to an apartment. As much as we're trying to save money, I think alternative two would probably be the one to go with. Basically because if we put a holding pond alongside the Walmart parking lot, it's basically a vacant field now. And any new development and everything already know it's there. And that can work into it rather than disrupt what is already happening. The price is $280,000 more, but I've never been one that's ever believed in doing Band-Aid fixes because if you're going to fix something, do it right or not do it at all. And I think if that's what it takes to do the job right, then that's where I'm leaning is alternative two and get rid of that holding pond on Fairlane Drive.
One thing I could share with you.
One thing I could share with you is just, and this is just what the county has for value of those, of the three different kind of options that we talked about. I won't give you the specifics, but kind of more of the general, but the, the property next to Walmart on paper is the, the cheapest on a square foot basis. Then it would be followed by the Fair Lane property and then by the, by the Walmart parcel. That would be in order of the, you know, and it's, you know, it's, it's over double between the top and the, or the lowest and the, and the, and the most. According, now granted, you have to have a, you have to go through negotiations, so I'm just saying what is in the value that the county places on that property at this point.
Are you talking about putting then the Catch Basin or the Surge Basin out along the, on your alternate four? Is that the one that you're saying is the?
I'm saying between, we really have kind of three locations. We have,
That's right.
we have a pond on the parcel that's to the east of Walmart. We have a pond essentially we discussed on the Walmart and then that northerly against 12th Street, and then we have the one on Fair Lane. So between those three, the parcel to the east of Walmart is, is the lowest on a square foot basis, then Fair Lane, and then the Walmart parcel.
The maps that you have here has four, so that's why I'm confused. Can you want to come up here for a second?
Yeah. You got this one right here?
Yep.
Right? You got this one right here?
This, this is all one parcel. So this, whether it's here, whether it's here, the cost per square foot on the county records would be.
Okay, all right. Thanks. So, but once again, real, the real big caveat is you got to have a willing seller and you have to negotiate and the price may or may not be what the county valuation of those properties are.
Okay.
Is there a chance that we can run this storm sewer farther around the corner on Belt Line and put catch basins in and eliminate two holding ponds, or is that?
Um.
On the west side?
Well, I was, I was trying to maximize. I mean, if we don't have those, those smaller two ponds,
Mm-hmm.
if we don't utilize those, we probably, we, we would upsize our piping. You know, we could, as we got into design, we could look at those details and see if we could do that. They don't have a huge benefit, but they do knock off some of the peaks in order to keep those pipe sizes a little bit smaller on that west side. But, you know, we could go through, as we go through it and see if whether it's possible to do it. You know, we, there are a couple ponds. We would have to get, you know, valuation and, and, and the cost for those ponds, at least of the value of that property is in the cost
Right.
at this point, so.
But I was thinking if we could use the cost of purchasing the land for those ponds and put it toward more pipe going west and eliminate that open ditch, because that one open ditch there is really washed out and really almost hard to maintain for the property owner already without expecting more water to keep going down, just to keep doing the same thing.
The county's plans on Belt Line, you know, east, excuse me, west of Getty is, it's really going to be maintained to be a rural section through there.
Mm-hmm.
So it's all going to be ditches just like it is now.
Right.
There's nothing going to be changed in there at this, at this stage at least. The only thing that's an urban section, and I have a picture here, I can pass it around if someone would like to take a look, really is right where 12th comes and hooks in from the south and connects. I'll, I'll give this to you. Peak at that. That is, you see it in the yellow in there? That is the county's, that would really be the urban portions of the project. So.
So there's no way to put enough pipe in there that would eliminate the holding ponds? Is that what you're saying?
The two little ones? Oh, absolutely. We could. It's just, there becomes a cost. I mean, more pipe is, is way more expensive as it relates versus, versus ponds, so.
If we did extend that pipe farther west up pipe, up Belt Line
Mm-hmm.
and eliminated those holding ponds and used the money from the holding ponds for that pipe, would we still have to increase that pipe on Getty?
Yeah, because there's, yeah, because there's a lot of flow that comes down, that comes in right where I show that northerly kind of extent of it. We really need to go up and, and provide a trunk up there that eventually might get extended a little bit further when Getty is redone sometime in the future. Really similar to what we did on the last project. We went to the corner of A Street. That is meant to be able to go further to the west and to the, to the south. You know, that's why we, we don't, wouldn't normally have, I think we have eight catch basins in that corner.
Mm-hmm.
We wouldn't normally do that, but that's where we decided to stop and we needed to have all those to catch all the water that's coming down from the rest of the drainage shed, so.
Because I was just looking at if we didn't have to go up Getty and replace that section, that'd be just more money to extend the pipe farther west on Belt Line.
And those are areas, you know, like the extension to the north, that could be held off, you know, that essentially a block, if you will. I mean, that could be held off to save a little bit of money. That could be done at a later point in time when Getty is, is reconstructed sometime in the future. That could be done, that, those sections, without really a substantial issue, I would say. That water's coming overland now, so as long as we get it down there, are able to pick it up.
Right.
In this case, it's nice that there's a pond there because we don't have to have all those catch basins. We can essentially let it overflow into a pond and then we suck it back out of a pond through, through the discharge piping.
Right.
So.
So the minimum, really what you're looking tonight is some direction on, do we want to participate really with the county here, don't we? That's what it's coming down to?
Really, really. It's a, do you, do we want to do this project and if so, how much are, are we willing to bite off? And, and they need to know, are we participating in this project with them or not?
Right.
Well, based on, based on the projects and, and my opinion, based on the projects that we've worked on and just finishing Fourth Street recently, you know, I, I personally would really encourage us to look at it in two phases and take phase one and take care of the things with the county, get us easterly across Main Street potentially in 2015, and then look at the second half of it in 2016. It's going to take you most of the summer anyways to do the construction. There ain't going to be a significant flow change because you're going to be under construction, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then finish it in 2016, which will allow us to find the funding mechanisms to work over 24 months versus 12 months. That's just a thought that I had, but I'm, again, I want to open it up to the full council to, for you guys' input because we need to give some direction to the county and we need to give some direction to Vicki on how and how much funds she needs to, to do.
Just a quick question on the funding. So we were talking about at this point, 2% from MinnDOT or the county?
County.
Comes from county, yeah.
Okay.
It really is county state aid, so in a sense it, it really is state money that filters through the county.
That would go to the project.
Yep.
And the other aspect of moving it while the county's doing this work is to save that, tearing up that road later and extra costs there.
Yep.
For the road.
Absolutely.
Correct, correct. It's, it's being done. If we wait, then we have to tear the road up. So those, those are the kind of the two drive, there are two driving, and then probably the secondary one, or the second one is more, more of the issue for us than at this point in regards to tearing the road up.
Well, we would have, right now, if we work with the county, they're going to pay the reconstruction of the road, correct?
Correct.
If we don't, we're going to take the full reconstruction of the road and be all of our costs. And it'll really increase the project.
At least of the portions we need to do, correct. And essentially with our parallel pipes, because what their system that they have designed, it pretty much falls right where we'd want to go. So if we don't be a part of it, we're going to end up trying to squeeze our way into next to it in the, in the Northerly Boulevard and trying to figure out how to, how to do that. But it, it definitely lends itself to, to being a joint project. I think there's no question about that.
So doing it in two phases as far as making sure we capitalize on this first one, the fact that this problem has been around for many years, putting it in two phases doesn't seem like it's, it's
No.
excessive thing. And as Brad was just pointing out, there's going to be a lot of construction. So this really could, we may say two phases, but it, it could literally take two years to do anyways.
It, it can, and certainly, and I think between options one and two, you know, Councilmember Stone was talking about option two. I think that could be phased as well. You really could do the west half and then continue on with the easterly. If you want to break it at 71, that could be done the following year too. But I think in, in that case, you probably would want to do it the next year because MinnDOT's going to have some issues with the extra water coming in and crossing the existing, so we'll need to deal with that as if it's one continuation of a project. So I would say the caveat on option two is we, I think, would need to commit to, you know, one year and the following year would be the, would be the next. So it essentially is one continuation. We probably would even want to, I would suspect, we'd want to bid it as one project and just do like we did before and, and phase it over two-year construction. I mean, I think that would be, we'd get our cheapest bids by going that route and just phasing it, just like we did before over two years.
Well, and, and I would agree. And is there such a thing as, as, I mean, again, tonight I want to give you some direction. I mean, we need to give Vicki some direction. But I think there seems to be maybe some, a little different feelings about the phase two portion or the easterly side and really what is the best, whether it's the holding ponds along Fair Lane or whether it's to really look at doing something around the backside of those existing properties and, and as I mentioned, behind American Inn and the city's ambulance garage, whatnot, and, you know, having you maybe reevaluate, at least give it us some dollars for that, because either way you got to add new pipes. If we take this option here, it's new, it's new infrastructure, new pipes all the way down along 12th Street from Fair Lane Drive anyways. All right?
Yeah.
So it's adding a new pipe.
And I think you can, if, if the council is willing to have a little bit of faith and move forward, I think we can have some of those discussions in terms of what we actually want to do, maybe by our, by our next meeting and continue on. And, and I don't think we have to have the exact, but we need to know that we are moving forward. We're looking at those, these final options. I think that will be fine, but we will need to move forward. We can't drag it out. I mean, we'll need to make a decision and move on.
But you really, you really need, Keith, is for us just to make a decision on the east side. You don't need in the next meeting or two for us to decide, excuse me, for, for us to make a decision on the west side. You don't need us to make a decision on the east side in the next meeting or two, do you?
Only as it relates to options. If we look at, say, option two, we really are going to need to know that because that will impact some of those designs on, on the west side, obviously how we're coming through there. Do we need to know that tonight? No. We need to know tonight that, yes, we're committed to doing something. We are moving forward. We're going to make those final decisions as to how we want to ultimately route this, whether, essentially for us, whether it's option, you know, alternative one or alternative two. I think we need to do that soon thereafter because we'll have to be moving forward into, into a design phase and, and both of those are a little different, how it comes across Truck Highway 71, so.
Has the county given you a deadline as far as when they want our design phase handed to them, if we're going to participate?
Well, when we've talked about it, they are, and this is, keep in mind, this is just talking at this point, so it's not written in stone. But their thought was they would probably want us, the city, to take responsibility for the storm sewer and we would just do all that design, everything for that job essentially in this area and then give it to them. You know, and obviously there's some things that are theirs. We'll have to work on costs and, you know, if they reimburse the city for shares that really should be theirs for piping and those kinds of things. But they kind of thought they'd rather give it to the city to take care of and that would just be incorporated right into their, into their plan set. So that's what they've suggested at this point.
The one thing, I think tonight we can make a decision whether or not we're going to participate, which to me is kind of a no-brainer, that we have no choice in participate on the, with the county on this. But I'd like by the next meeting, if you could, for the design phase, if you could show us what the cost would be.
For taking out the Timber Lane going in the back? Is that what you're?
Well.
Going?
No, um,
Okay.
on the west side.
Oh, west side.
Extending that pipe around the corner and put catch basins instead of holding ponds and maybe doing that Getty Street later.
Okay.
I don't know what the rest of the council feels on that, but I'd like to see that option.
We, we could do that. I would need to know kind of also as it relates to option, alternative two because it would have bearing as to
Yeah.
those issues. So you, you'd just kind of have to tell me. If you're really looking at one alternative or the other, we could do that. If you want to still look at two of them, then I just, we just need to know.
So your alternate two really changes how you're crossing Main Street. That's what it comes down to. So if we go with alternate one and we say we're going to do the west side, then that's fine. You're going to take your main all the way across to the other side of Holiday.
Correct.
If we go with alternate two, you're not going to cross Main Street.
We're not crossing Main Street.
So there's a big difference in his design getting back to the county
Correct.
right away if we're choosing, it's kind of a third alternate, you know what I mean? It's, it's not one or the other.
And we don't have to have that tonight, but I would say we would have to have, next, next meeting, we would want to decide how we're doing it.
This is where alternate two comes. Not down here. Go all the way to this page. Keep going.
You know, and we can certainly look at alternative two A, if you will, with moving it from Timber Lane to behind the businesses.
Oh, no, I would say crossing here.
Right, but that's not how alternate two is designed today. You know what I mean? That's the big changes.
Is it? Actually, it's not alternative two. It's, I'm not sure which alternative. I have to look. I can't remember which number that is, but it's not alternative two. But for our purposes of discussion, we're really talking, I think what I'm hearing you discuss is alternative one and potentially, but alternative two, we have to put a number on that. Alternative two that you have is, remember, is different more than you were discussing coming along the backside.
I was talking east side, yeah.
So I need to put, if you want me to look at that, I need to put detailed numbers together for that alternative and bring it back to you for the next meeting.
I, I think we all were kind of thinking that we were going to take the main, underneath Main Street and get to the east side along 12th Street.
Yep.
So, you know, that kind of drives everything back to your alternative one.
Alternative one, yeah.
The question comes is after we get across the east side of Main Street, where do we go then with the pipe and the route?
Correct.
Okay, do we go straight across and come around the backside like this, or do we continue east all the way along 12th Street and go into existing and build new from that perspective? So I think, I mean, I know, I hear what Warren's saying and what I'm, my thought is, is let's get us east as far as we can across. If it's phase one and takes us to the existing 36-inch pipe, let's do that as phase one and plan for that as you have proposed.
Okay.
And then bring back alternatives of what we do with it once we're east.
Once we're on the other side.
Yep.
Okay.
Is, is, council have any other thoughts? Or is there some additional direction? Is everybody comfortable with, with that?
Yeah. I mean, essentially on the east side, the, the direction is where, can we get rid of some of those ponds? Or can we move that to the south and what's that going to take? And we really actually have the alternative. We'll have to, I'll have to just work a little bit on getting those dollars for you to, to, to change that. I can't remember which number that, might be three or four or something in there, but we have, we have that. So I'll just have to put some more numbers together specifically for that one. Because I, I think that's what you're saying, correct? You really would rather not do Fair Lane. You'd, I'm thinking Walmart, you'd rather not do the Walmart. So you'd probably want to stay on the one parcel and prefer, preferably to the south end of it. Is that's what I'm seeing? I'm seeing nodding heads, so, okay.
Because that is where an existing pond is today, and that's the least, in my opinion, the least valuable and most common sense is where an additional pond would be going forward.
Like, you know, the backside of some development that would occur there.
On the backside of a new, new development, absolutely.
Right.
Okay.
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 Thank you, Keith. There Keith, while you're standing up here. This is kind of, I think, the vision at least that I was looking at. And here's your holding pond. You got, you get rid of all these costs in this mindset. So anyways, just something about that. So you, you kind of want a number for going. That would be the one option. Okay. Okay. All right. All right, we're moving on then to our, we have the new business consent agenda. We have three things on our consent agenda this evening. We have a schedule of pay, schedule of claims for a total of unpaid claims of $78,981.71. We have no paid claims, so we have a total of scheduled claims of $78,981. We also have several different things to make note within a resolution 2014-85. I want to note and acknowledge the contributions that were made. $196 from the men's card playing group to the senior center. $196 from the men's card playing group to the senior center, Bolton and Mink of $250 to the airport, Agstar Financial of $3,000 to the fire department, SOX Center Youth Hockey of $5,000 to the arena, and also SOX Center Youth Hockey of $10,000 to the arena for the new infrared heating system that's going in as we speak. So again, thank you to all of those contributions. Also, we have a gambling application for exempt permit request from the SOX Center Lions Club for a raffle on February 25th at Jitters Java Cafe. So that is our consent agenda. Is there any questions in regards to the schedule of claims that were added in your packet or of anything else on the consent agenda as presented? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keith, seconded by Dave. Is there any discussion? Call the motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstentions, motion carries. Five in favor, nine against. We do have just a couple informational items. A reminder of the hearing on our fifth Plan Amendment, as Vicky stated, is November 19th, and the Township Board meeting a week from tonight on November 12th. So if you want to attend those with Vicky, feel free to do so. Hearing that, I have nothing else on our agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Warren and seconded by Mike. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstentions, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.